Alright, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is now 4:30. We're gonna go into public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll reserve the time till 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock. So just raise your hands. And now we're gonna move to the East Kingston kiddo presentation.
Thank you very much. Our first and second grade team has a very small presentation for our board tonight that they're really excited about. They don't work you really hard on. We have six students from first and second grade who are here to present, along with teachers Ms. Smith, Mr. Blonsky, and Mr. Stevens. So we are going to turn it over to our 1-2 team, and we hope you enjoy the presentation.
I don't have any examples, but I'm gonna sell them.
And lots more.
And lots more.
And lots more.
Community members will be asked to donate $25 for our state. The money will go to our community's baby community.
The community is organizing what we can create in outdoor learning centers for our school.
All of the money raised from the makers market will be donated to help with outdoor learning.
Making stick petto.
Making books and cookies.
Helping create an outdoor classroom.
We want to do ways for you to start an outdoor classroom.
Helping set up for the makers market.
Thanks guys, awesome job. Really difficult to do without the presentation and the wonderful people. But thanks so much for doing that. Nice work.
Do you have any questions for them, or are you good?
Yeah, let their families go.
And then y'all.
Yeah.
That was so cute.
That's really good. You talked to the department about Friday night, the 6th? There could be a basketball practice.
I'm gonna have to reschedule.
Need an outlet?
Yeah. That's probably something.
An outlet? Like nearby that you know of, or?
The closest one is over there.
You don't have one of those, a teabag, an extension clip?
I can grab one if you need me to.
Where is it? I can get it.
It's real.
Probably in Mr. Smith's office. Can you go grab one?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you for it.
Do you want to push? Oh, I'm quite a lot. Should we push?
Chaos.
So the teachers are here for that?
Yeah, it's the academic data. And then we'll do budget.
Okay, so you're gonna...
So I'll wait for Brandon to get that.
Yeah.
And we'll do the academic data. Presentation. Oh, student presentation, I see.
Nice.
So it's so good.
So I just wanted to see if there was any public comment at this point. We're still... Oh, yes.
I don't have a comment that's not written on.
It wasn't posted online? Okay, we'll print some. You have yours? Okay, cool. Do you want us to print another one too? You're good? Okay. Sorry about that. It's weird. That is weird. I didn't check to see if it was on there.
I never got the staff handbook that I requested at the last meeting.
Yeah, I was just checking on that for you, Dr. Branding.
Were you not on the wifi maybe?
No, I sent them the student one. And then I had sent it to Renee. Did you send me the staff one?
Brandon owned it, and I believe it's on our website. With the student handbook.
Let me see if I can download it for you, Mr. Branding, and then I'll shoot it over to you. I know you were having trouble accessing it last time.
So you said support services?
That's what it says, yeah.
And tell me the amount? So...
I just didn't know because other things are listed above the emails.
Yeah. So I think I would hand that question over to Michelle just so she can get that category correct.
It was just on the front, the first change.
It's the proposal she's looking at.
Oh, she's not gonna have the proposal in her pocket?
That's the proposal, right? Yeah, so we're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, we'll go over this.
Okay. I was like, I haven't even seen that yet. I didn't know it was online.
Support services includes all the benefits for the employees. So it's the private pay on the taxes, it's the retirement paid on the taxes.
That was on the board?
The health insurance.
And it's online too then?
The social insurance. Visibility insurance, life insurance. It's all of those categories. So that's all separate.
Did you see that? In the board? I must have missed it.
The only thing I have is the proposed, right?
Yep. Alright, so we're good at that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Brandon, we're gonna stick right with the academic data.
Oh.
We're just gonna... While the teachers are here, we'll kinda skip around the agenda a little bit to make it convenient. That's okay with you guys?
So we're gonna jump to the principals report, and then we'll jump back up and do the budget. You didn't miss it. We haven't done it yet. We're gonna do...
No, no, I thought you told me just...
Yeah. We just have the academic report, and then we'll go over financials because the teachers are here.
So this is our assessment information for fall 2024. And also, you're gonna see numbers of last spring's SAS in addition to the three years, the last three years of our assessment. This is just from the department of how we assess our students and why we assess our students. This is just one small piece of our assessments in addition to what we do in-house and what our teachers do in their classrooms on a day-to-day basis. Now, this is our spring data from 2024. You're gonna see that the last three years we have on there just so we can show you the progression of our students, right? Our third graders last year took SAS for the first time ever. So there's no progress updates for our this year's fourth grade students. ELA, we were at 56% of our students proficient in third grade, 55% in fourth grade, and 71% in fifth grade. Math, last spring, our third grade students were at 89% proficiency. We presented the math, if you remember last spring, because we got that data right away. 65% of our students in fourth grade and 65% of our students in fifth grade were proficient in math. You can see, for example, our last year's fifth grade students as fourth graders were at 44% proficiency. It would even jump up to 71%. Similarly, down here, we had 63% of our fifth graders last year as fourth grade students were at 63%. So we saw progress across the board for our students here at EKS. The one area that, as the state presents or lists their assessment data, we did talk about this briefly, but I wanted to put it on here because I think this is important. These numbers that I just went through, these are based on the percentage or... These are based on the students that took the actual assessment. This is not taken into account the students that received zeros because they did not take the assessment because we did fall below 95%. We don't have those numbers yet on what the state is going to list as our school averages. This is just the students that took the assessments in the spring. So that'll change once the state... What am I looking for?
Yes, yeah. And just to be... The student doesn't receive the zero for opting out. It's just a zero is calculated into our achievement indicator score. So at times, especially in smaller schools, you might see, like Brandon showed, 89% of our students are proficient. But if we had one or two students opt out, that could affect that achievement score that the state would put out. And so I'd just like to say that beforehand, or when the state does put out, that's why you might see some differences in the scores. In our larger schools, like CMS or EHS, you don't see it because it's harder to fall below that 95%.
Is it weighted as a zero?
Mm-hmm. It is.
So did we fall below for ELA and math, or just one?
Below the 95%?
Below the 95%.
What did that mean for both?
Both. For both? Well, I didn't know if somebody maybe just opted out of just maybe the math.
The parents, the parents that opted them out, opted them out for both.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Yeah, any more questions about that? We listed this, we talked about this last year as you thought about PLCs and what our students and what our... Sorry, what our staff are doing during PLCs sometimes. These are the four questions that we kind of lead our PLCs with. What should students know and be able to do? Number two is how will we assess progress towards mastery? Three is how will we respond when students struggle? And number four, how will we respond when students excel? Our PLC teams use not just SAS assessments, but iReady assessments, Acadiance, and what they're doing inside their classrooms to help us answer those questions as we sit down as a group with our K through 2 teams or 3L5 teams, 3 through 5 teams. Our grade level teams also have data dives with Mrs. Schuster to look at the reading scores and our data wall that we're doing in-house here at school. And they again help us lead those PLC times and answer those questions for our students that either are on grade level or are struggling or the students who are more of the extension. Our students in first through fifth grade took the iReady math and reading diagnostics in the fall, winter, and spring. Our students, we tried our K students this year with just the math for the first time. Typically, our students in kindergarten aren't taking the iReads, a diagnostic book, but we just wanted to see how they're doing just in math as they come into our school. So you're gonna see kindergarten students in their math diagnostic scores. We'll do this again in the winter and then again in the spring. What we're looking at iReady diagnostic data, this provides both a norm reference and a criterion reference score for students, which are displayed in different ways on the iReady platform. This year, for the first time, our parents received in the fall a parent-friendly iReady report that was sent home that helped kind of guide questions at conference times and that type of thing just to give parents a little more information on where their students are at. The norm reference scores, these scores, also known as percentile ranks, show how a student's performance compares to nationally representative group of students. This is useful for looking at the big picture of what a student knows in the specific content area. You will see this represented on the iReady family report that was sent home. So that's what we send home in the fall. We'll send that home again in the spring to see how the students perform throughout the year. Criterion reference scores, these scores, also known as grade level placements, show how students' performance compares to a grade level standard. This is useful for our teachers in our PLC times and the grade level team times. And this is what's going to be presented in the next slide. You're gonna see here. This was our fall iReady diagnostic data, which is showing that 93% of our students performed above or ready to learn at grade level math. This is up 2% from last fall. The yellow confuses people when you're looking at this graph because yellow can mean not great, warning. It doesn't mean at all as far as iReady goes. The yellow means that students are ready to learn the grade level content. So when you're looking at this, again, 93% of our students are ready to learn grade level content in the fall for math. As we look at ELA, we have 86% of our students that performed above or ready to learn at grade level for reading. This is also up 2% from last fall. And again, we're using this data here that you're seeing during our team times, during our PLC times with our K through 2 and I3 through 5 staff. And, I'm sorry, the blue graph was the percentile ranks, right? That I talked about earlier, that parents might get in their reports. So the red line is the bell curve, in your normal bell curve. So you can see that both, in particular math, we're doing much better than the normal bell curve would look like. And it looks very promising in reading as well. Non-standardized learning opportunities that you're gonna see here, hands-on projects, unit assessments, STEAM projects, celebrations of learning that we have not started yet, but we'll see as the year goes along. Cross-content-based units of instruction and assessment, right? Social studies, trust and memory, writing and reading. Play-based learning performance assessments in the classroom. So we're using the diagnostic data and what's happening with our teachers in their classrooms. Just talked about data. What's next? Our fall data meetings have happened with Mrs. Schuster in reading in particular. Some of our strengths that the data is showing that our students are performing well in phonological awareness and phonics, which are the foundational reading skills that OG really hits as students come into kindergarten through second grade. We're gonna continue training, sorry, continue. Sorry, let me go backwards. Some areas for opportunity for teaching include vocabulary. The examples include morphology, multi-meaning words, chains of meaning, which will support student comprehension. One of the areas that was a focus, I'm gonna give you an example of kind of what's happening during our PLC and our team times. An example from last year, we saw that our third and fourth graders were not performing up to what we wanted them to be in informational text. So that was an area focused last year for third and fourth grade students and their teachers. The data is now showing that our current fifth graders are really strong in informational text, and they're able to move on to...
Literary.
What's that?
Literary comprehension.
Literary comprehension. So what this shows is the data talks, the data dives that we're having in our classrooms, with our classroom teachers, in our PLC times, in our collaborative team times, and finding areas where we have opportunities for growth. Those things are happening. We're hitting those areas. And once those areas are hit, we're moving out. An example was that, a good grade example for this year. We're gonna continue training staff members K through 5 to support reading instruction. And our PLC times continue to focus on core math instruction. We're building rubrics looking at essential standards that we want to be hitting in math and assessment. Any questions? I know that was a lot pretty quickly.
Are you all done with your presentation?
Yes.
Do you have any way of assessing like transferability for reading? So you're doing OG for training, right? And then kids are picking out their own personal texts that they want to read for sustained silent reading in class. Is there any way to like track whether or not they're actually reading or looking at the pictures or creating their own stories? All very beneficial, but I'm wondering from the strict instruction that you're having with them, moving it to a transferable space where they're picking up a book and just reading it for pleasure? Is there any way to assess that? Or we just, is it observational only?
Our assessments are connected text. So it's not controlled text like a decoder that they would get in OG. So the assessments that we're showing in the results are from a connected text. So when they would pick it up, that's a measure at that grade level of text that they could see.
Right, I'm picking this up cold, and I should be able to read it from that space.
Correct. So, for example, like 1-2 might have a phonetic concept of the week of a vowel team. And so they're decodable.
Matches.
That or any concept previous. But the assessments that we administer for iReads or for Acadiance have a connected text that might have phonetic concepts they haven't heard yet, but are at that grade level. So we're exposed to it and assessed at that level.
Right, so that's a way to see if it's transferring to a different test. Great, thank you. Brandon, my other question is, when you showed us the data of being up 2% in math and in reading, that's the school?
School-wide, yeah.
School-wide?
Yeah.
And it did include K?
Just math.
Just math included K?
Yeah.
Okay.
Comparably, in terms of the number of students last year compared to this year, what's the percentage either increase or decrease? Student population-wise?
Number of students that took the test?
Yeah, just compared to last year. Just because if we're up 2%, it would be down or up percent-wise in terms of the kids that were involved. Just enough of that's the number we had.
Enrollment numbers?
I don't have the number for that. And you gotta remember too, you know, we had a couple of fifth graders...
Fifth graders go out, yeah.
Leave.
Right.
So it's not gonna match.
Match, yeah.
I think there would be a difference, though. I think we were probably at like, what, 121 kids?
Last year, I think we were at 118.
118, yeah, 118. And now we're at...
108.
108.
Yeah.
Yeah, 108, I'm sure.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
I think the numbers look really great. I think we've made huge gains. The kids have made gains. So I think it's a win for everyone, really. Yeah. So I like the data talks and dives. I think that's great. The one question that I did have is around the math interventionist piece. I know that STEAM is taught with a math interventionist, but I just didn't know if you've ever shared data on how many kids are getting like one-on-one time with the interventionists?
How many students she has on her case line?
Yeah.
So she's, she's, she does a lot more than just students that need math intervention. She's working with a group of students in all grade levels, first through fifth grade, on more of the math extension. So students that are achieving above grade level.
Okay.
She's polling groups, not only for students that need intervention, but also students that have the capabilities to move further along, which is pretty awesome, yeah.
Okay, so she's meeting with groups of kiddos?
Yeah. She's also pushing into classrooms.
Pushing in, okay.
She's polling kids and doing some pre-teaching prior to lessons being taught. Who need a little extra before they go into classrooms. So yeah, she's, she's, she's doing a lot with all different populations in her school.
Nice.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
And because that's a tier 2, right, in MTSS, I'd be really curious to see what growth has been made because the tier 2s have been put into place. That is like the proximal gold of instruction right there. And so having both the math interventionists and our reading interventionists, I'm just curious what, since we did and did not have, like how much growth has been accured, accured?
Accrued.
What, accrued? Accrued, thank you. Since those two positions have been here because my guess would be pretty substantial.
Well, I think just if you look at this SAS data itself, I mean, just looking at that.
Pre- and post?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'll tell.
I think, can I, is it okay if I...
Please.
Another piece of data to look at, especially every fall, would be that slide that said students that are ready for on-grade level instruction. That's what you want to see continue to decrease. And then we really look at the students that are in the red. You want, no, you want that to increase. You want students in the red to decrease.
Decrease, right.
iReady can be tricky to follow throughout the year, but I think if we look at that every fall to see how are students entering in to the grade level? How many students do we need to intervene with right away? It is one piece of data, right? So that we do look at that and say, well, this is inaccurate. I have other pieces that show the students ready for grade level or not. But I think that's one solid indicator for us to see who's ready for core instruction and who needs the tier 2. So that 2% of that increase, I think was good. And we really want to continue to see that trend.
But you're also gonna see the yellow to the green.
Yeah.
You're gonna trend from yellow to green, which could be part of your 2% increase also, so...
That's true.
So all good stuff, that's, you know, that's all in the right positive space. It's the reds that, you know, our red kiddos that we really want to stay. They're not a lot, right? Because we're such a small school. So the attention we can give those kiddos really matters.
Yeah. Did you receive any feedback from the parents after they got their iReady assessments?
I personally didn't. I'm sure classroom teachers. It really helped because they received it before conferences.
Oh, nice.
So it helped kind of lead some of that discussion during their fall conferences, which was good.
So it, it, it helped kinda lead some of that discussion during their fall conferences, which was good.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And then the other question I had is, do you think it would be beneficial to send something home? I know you do, and, ahead of New Hampshire testing, but I just didn't know if there was information that we could send out to get more participation. I'm not sure how many numbers we fell below. How many kiddos fell below that 95%?
It was one or, it was one or two, I don't know the exact.
Okay.
It would be like probably one point something when you look at the numbers.
Okay, so maybe, yeah.
It's, it's interesting, 'cause New Hampshire allows parents to opt out.
Right.
But then they still count it, weigh it at a zero for us, so...
Yes.
It's really, we just, you know, parent choice, but at the same time, we still get a zero.
Yeah, you definitely have to be careful, you wanna respect that choice and not, like, you can't, you don't wanna sway anybody to do anything like that. But I think it's good to note it, especially when data is shown. Because that's, and that's taken into account after that accountability piece gets put in. So we see the scores right away of just the students that took the test. And so, just good to say it and note it.
Thanks. Do you guys have any other questions on the data presentation?
It's not unless the kids' presentation.
You have to watch the video. They're very good, did a great job.
Second graders?
First and second.
First and second graders did that presentation. Pretty cool.
Okay, all right, so, uh, just wanted to open it up for any public comment.
When I was roaming around trying to find the agenda.
Yes.
I found under SAU 16, a list of elementary schools in SAU 16. And apparently East Kingston isn't one. There was New Fields, and Kensington Elementary, Lincoln Street, Main Street, that's all I can remember of it. But East Kingston wasn't on the list, and I just thought if somebody was looking for a school, they wouldn't know it was there if they were from, you know, outer area.
Wow.
But our school board stuff is on there. Our school board stuff is on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our school board's information, because I went to it today.
Oh, no, it will be there, I just found it. But on this list...
On this list, it wasn't listed, huh?
I don't know if it's an SAU 16 list or another list. It's listed on our SAU 16 webpage, so I don't know if there's another webpage that doesn't have it.
Do you remember what you clicked?
Well, I clicked on to SAU 16 first.
And then you went to elementary schools?
Are you saying it is there, Brandon?
It is right there, yeah.
Right at the top. Followed place.
We're looking...
Could've been something in the, the overall school district.
Yeah, it might've been another area. We'll have to, thanks for letting us know. We're showing it, like, on the main screen, but maybe there was a different section that you clicked on? Yeah, yeah, but we'll, we'll check out the website and make sure that we're there.
I'll double-check with Sharon to make sure there's no errors there. 'Cause we are updoing our, we are, we are redoing our webpages, we're updating them, so I don't, it could've been the middle of an update.
Okay.
I did check our website too, for EKS, the staff handbook is not up there. It's just the family handbook, it's accessible under the forms and documents.
Okay.
I even looked on the staff page too, it wasn't there, so.
Did you wanna?
Yeah, Mr. Brandon, I looked on the website, just double-checked, the staff handbook is not up there, so we'll, we'll have to get it too. I checked on the staff page, yeah.
Yes, we're circling back to the staff handbook.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So it's not on the webpage, so we're gonna get it to you. Okay, we have some webpage updates to look at, on it. All right. Yeah, let's just continue, and then, uh... She's gonna be doing financials, so I think we should probably reserve a little bit of public comment time, just where we can...
You can open it again at the end if you want.
A lot of presentations opening, that up a little bit later for more public input.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, so we're gonna continue with Brandon's principal report.
I don't have much more. Our enrollment numbers have stayed the same, 15 kindergarten, 18 in first grade, 24 second graders, third, 23rd graders, 10 fourth grader, 21 fifth grade, for a total of 108. Last month, we had a PTO, our PTO Thought Festival, it's one of their biggest fundraisers, if not the biggest fundraiser of the year now. And I just wanna, I want to thank some of our local companies who supported us and sponsored this event. Advanced Ray Down Litigation, JTV Construction and Remodeling, Jones General Store, KB Dance, RB Allen, FLC Corporation, East Kingston Library, Puddle Jumpers Children's Shop, Jim's Barber Shop, and New England Pizza. Again, thank you. And I'm all set.
Very nice. Brandon, the one question I had is, I know that you're always keeping track of kindergarten enrollment for next, the next school year, and I didn't know if you had any projections?
We're projecting a fairly large group of kindergarteners. We have 16 right now, just based on siblings in the building.
Oh, wow.
Doesn't include any new ones, so we're, we're, we're hoping, and, and it's looking promising for another large group of students coming in. Couple years in a row, we had, you know, 30, and then like 28, and then it dipped down a little bit. So, hoping to get back around 30 again, which would be awesome.
Yeah. I'd say that's a large number, considering we're in November, yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
So we are going to go back up in the agenda here to business and financials. So we have Michelle here. I'm assuming you're gonna go over the financials for us?
So, when we met at the last board meeting, our remaining budget of $192,228. And after some spending and some encumbrance, we spent an additional, spent or encumbered, because a lot of it's encumbrance, $45,983 to come down to a remaining budget of $146,245. But we did want to make a note on this, that some of this will be returning from either trusts or grants to the tune of $29,300, just so that you don't think that we're not looking at that also. So, a lot of encumbrances, we decreased the encumbrance for natural gas. We will continue to look at that as the invoices came in, but the original encumbrance seemed a little high. We had to increase it for electricity, and we made some other adjustments. There was a staff change in benefits, so you will also see an additional encumbrance in that line. So right now, we would project with the money coming back from the trusts and the grants, that you have remaining budgets of $175,545. Are there any questions?
I just wanna, 'cause, so I saw adjusted fiscal year '22 in the projected remaining, and I got really confused. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, so adjusted FY '22 projected remaining expense? And I'm like, is that me? Do you see where I'm seeing that, Michelle?
Oh, oh, okay, Molly made, yeah. That's just an error.
Okay, all right, well, right, 'cause I'm already bad enough reading this stuff, I don't need any, anything else.
There we go.
I'm just saying, like, am I supposed to be looking at that number too? And, and again, from my own, from my own knowledge, so we have $175,000 left in our budget to spend for this year. Is that what I'm seeing, hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
But as you know, we're still at the very beginning.
Beginning, yeah.
People make changes in their health and dental, and things happen.
Okay.
And there's things that just...
Happen.
...we haven't heard yet until, until they're known.
Right. So, I look at that number a little bit differently. That is like what we have, what we budgeted for, that we know we're not going to spend, that $175,000, that... You know, that's...
We don't know yet.
We don't spend it right yet.
We don't encumber certain things until they're spent, like, like substitutes. And you can see, like, this month, we spent $3,300 in substitutes. So if you say, okay, we have nine more months left, or, seven more months left, okay, this $21,000 right there. So it's, it's, it doesn't mean that this is what we will end is, this is just what you have remaining known at this point in time.
Right, this is what's in the piggy bank at this very second.
Right, yeah. We have unknown invoices from student support services, vendors, VCBAs and stuff like that, that might ebb and flow, so that we don't encumber the exact amount yet. So that will eat up some of that, depending on what happens with students' needs.
Mm-hmm.
Best not encumbered yet.
Yeah, so some lines we might go over, but generally speaking, like, we're, right now, we're projected at a good pace. We budgeted well, and we're doing pretty well right now.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna ask.
That's the right question.
The bottom, right grid, where it says the project, previous year fund balances, was that based on this current point in time? Like, or is it, or was that for the whole year?
The very bottom box over here? No, these, these are the amounts that were actually given back to the trust base against the tax.
Okay, got it.
At the, at the very end.
At the very end, okay.
On June 30th, yeah.
Yep.
Did you see that line item that...
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it, um, I don't know what page.
I think it's the...
Or you printed it?
The proposed budget or the current?
Oh.
It's proposed.
Okay, all right, so it wasn't in the current. Do you have anything, Paul, for the current budget?
No, this is my first experience going through budgets, so I think for me, it's looking at, listening, you know, I'm sure we may have questions as we kinda go through this, maybe throughout the year, but just a lot to digest, obviously, being a first time, so.
Okay. So we'll move on to the FY '26 budget?
Proposed budget?
Yes, the proposed budget.
So that was also included in your board cap. We included what we call a major driver sheet on the chart. So this is, this is by what we call function. So, for instance, regular ed would be all of the lines that are included in the 1,100 function. So when you look at your account number, your, your, the first two digits are what we call funds. It's your next four are what we call function. So, this is just to give you some kind of an idea of the major drivers of what is behind this 0.95% increase. So we can certainly look at individual lines, or look at any questions that you have on the major drivers.
I will say, you'll see the special education has gone up. That is a trend across the state, really, the nation, and all of our school budgets are seeing an increase in special education. It's driven by student needs, and the grant funds have been drying up around special education, and the IDEA grants have been shrinking. So things that for the last 10 years have put in an IDEA grant have been slowly coming out. And there's just been a, a major increase in student needs. The CDC sent out a report and talked about students entering kindergarten. One in six have a behavioral health need that needs to be intervened at a school level now. Increase in speech and language and ADHD across the country, and New Hampshire's definitely seeing that. So there's rising costs in special education, and they're shrinking federal grant funds that the local districts use. So they kinda come together and you see that, that driver, and we really try to comb through the budget to save money elsewhere. 'Cause we know that's just a big, it's a big driver, and it's, and we did budget next year for what our real actual student IEP needs are, for the most part.
Can I ask a question? You know, when children receive psych, speech, OT, or PT, if their parents have insurance, are they billed?
The public school does not bill private insurances, because we have a legal mandate to offer and pay for that service. It's called FATE. So we, as a school, we have to pay for it. We have to give them a free and appropriate public education. It's not something we can bill private insurance for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I, my question was, I, I see, obviously, salaries gone up, right, for the proposed budget? That's a cool, or whatever, yeah, contract stuff. Salaries for special ed aides, right? That went up almost $30,000. And then, and then the one that I questioned, or that I was, like, raised my eyebrows at, was special ed professional services for instruction, so is that training?
Oh, I could talk about that.
Okay.
So we, because we, we contract with all of our service providers now, VCPA, OT...
PT, speech.
PT.
PT, not speech.
A school psych.
Okay.
We, we, and you can explain this, we, we had to move them from the salary lines, because they're no longer...
Salary.
East Kingston employees.
Yeah.
And we moved them into that profession. So, you're gonna see that the school psych line and the OT line is probably a dollar now, because we had to keep it on there.
If you look at, in your, a little further back in, in your report...
Yeah.
Is, the psych line was originally 11, 2140, 50321. And it has now been moved...
To $1.
Right. And then if you look at 2160, 50321, that has also been reduced. And it just got moved to the special ed professional service line. So it's, it's just a, for two of them, for psych and OT, it's a shifting.
And for VCPA, in the past, that was taken out of that line, but like Renee said, our IDEA funds are slowly going away, and the VCPA, a lot of his or her contracted service was taken out of IDEA, and that's...
Yeah, right for the grant stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and the need for those services are increasing, especially at the younger grades.
Okay.
As far as the paraprofessional, if you look at the regular ed paraprofessional line this year, it had one paraprofessional budgeted in it, and we've reduced that, because all of the aides are special ed paraprofessionals. So you'll see reduction, again, it's a reduction, it's a reduction in regular ed, but in addition in special ed paraprofessionals.
So can I just ask a question? So under, I'm on page four, PT services, we've, so you just told me, so what I heard was that we put them all together under contractual services, but under PT, on page four, there's an allotted $5,000 there. Why would there be another $5,000 allotted?
PT's not in that.
Not in the other thing?
Not in the other thing, yep.
Okay.
And that $5,000 is what the grant doesn't cover for what we anticipate getting an IDEA grant. We put the PT in the IDEA grant, anticipated for next year, and that's the difference of what we anticipate we would get versus what she will cost the district.
And, and OT underneath that for next year is $69,000. And I thought that was in the other one.
It should be, yeah.
That should be in the other one.
So, budgeted for 25.
What page are you on?
So I'm on page four.
It's about halfway down.
Oh, no, page, page four, at top it says physical therapy services, $5,000. And Renee just said, like, that's for anything that doesn't come out of the grant, we're just having a cushion. But then right underneath it, it says 25 budget, $69,000 for OT services.
That's this year's budget, not, this, not for the proposed, this is proposed, we moved in the proposed to the other account.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, right, so for the proposed, it's only, it says only a dollar. All right, I'm just, there's a lot of learning going on for me.
Yeah, absolutely, please ask. So, basically, we're looking at a less than 1% increase?
Yes.
In our budget for next year?
Right, again, the right question.
So, no, no, it's all great, I have lots of questions too. So, regular education, it looks like we have a big change, and so I like to break it down a little bit, as far as, like, what's in each line item. So, is, does that mean we're, how many teachers is that? Is that eight teachers for regular ed?
Yes.
So eight teachers, so that's a change from nine?
Yep, and there was, there was a handful of teachers that did track changing.
Okay.
Through PD, in the letters training, so they did jump up.
Because of credits?
Yes, because of credits, yep, yep. So, you, eight teachers, but they're more expensive next year.
Okay, and then for the special education, how many teachers is that? And is that a change from this year? 'Cause I know we're just getting an amount.
Same number.
So same number, two? Two special ed teachers.
One full-time speech is included in that?
Yeah.
In the special ed?
Yep.
It's the one full-time speech is in there too?
Yep.
I'm going off of the, like, cheat sheet breakdown.
Lovely cheat sheet.
Even though the speech mentioned a third of the way down there, in the separate line item, psych, speech, or GPT.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
Did we break out speech or...
Are you looking at just the special education?
Yeah, I'm just looking like...
Major drivers?
Yeah, major drivers.
Two, the two special ed teachers.
Two special ed teachers.
So, so we expect one of those two teachers to what we call track, in other words, gain more credits for the '26 year and the other one is, is still stepping. So that's why you see a higher percentage increase in their pay.
Yeah, I guess that's a large number. We're talking like five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So I don't know if this is like an error, but two people, like, what is included in that line?
Well, no, special ed isn't just two people.
This is the.
Major.
This is everything that is twelve hundred.
Yes, okay, so the whole twelve hundred line is that, okay. I was like, okay, yep. So it's two teachers and additional items that are in the twelve hundred line?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Let's see. And then the guidance services and health services, is that contractual?
Yes.
Okay, that's contractual. That's down. Office of the superintendent went down.
Yeah, two percent, two point three percent.
Two percent. Four percent.
Um, I know I should know this answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. For professional learning, well, you guys call it development, but for professional learning, all of our teachers get a certain amount of, of stipend, right? They don't all use that, do they? Like, what, so if, I'm a teacher and I want to go take courses, I know that I have to get a reimbursement for that, but not all of our teachers do that.
But contractually, we have to put it in the budget in case.
Correct, do we get that money back, though, if they don't use it? Like, what happens? Does it stay in the piggy bank? It stays in the piggy bank?
Yep, it's in the fund balance at the end of the year.
Can I ask a question just because I don't know? So if we have a one percent proposed increase, is that something that we, that goes to vote by the town or we vote on it? Or does, is that get pulled from potentially the end-of-year fund balance that's given back to the town?
So this is for next year, so we will go through a process and the board will present this budget to the public. This is our first draft.
Yep.
You provide us with your feedback, your thoughts, changes you want us to make and, um, and we do that or you say this is as good as it's gonna get, great, it's really up to you guys.
Yep.
And then we do, um, you present it at the deliberative and then the town does go and vote on it, yep.
So, uh, we have, before the deliberative, we have a public hearing and that'll be aside from our school board meeting. And so the public will be invited in to give us their feedback on this budget and at that point, we can still change this budget. And then we would vote to approve it or, um, as is or make changes and then it would go to the deliberative, yeah. So.
I have another question. Uh, explain media services to me. In my head, I'm thinking library.
Yep.
Okay, so that seems like a large number to me, so what are we doing besides?
Um, I'm guessing that's contractual as well.
It's the salary of the media literacy expert.
It just falls under its own line item, is that what we're saying?
Well, again, it's not just salary, it's.
Oh, yeah, we did need some new furniture in here too.
Yep, there's new furniture in there.
Okay.
And the media salary, she is, um, her increase is not just COLA, she's also stepping, so it's.
She's stepping, okay, yep.
What falls under school district operations, what does that consist of?
Is that our CIP? Capital Improvement Facilities?
Oh, okay, so that's like your school district secretary and your treasurer and your board payments and.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the district cabins, yeah, yeah.
Our food service continues to go up.
Yeah, um, that's also where some state funding has, or the cost to buy from the COOP at the state has gone up. For next year, they let us know.
Goods and services.
Yep, everything's gone up.
Taken into account for.
Yep.
Some of these line items, so.
So we had to account for the purchase of the food.
How's breakfast going, Brandon? Didn't we say we were gonna have breakfast?
We do.
How's that, is that?
It's, we have small groups.
Small, yeah, right. So needed, needed, yep, needed, but not bringing in any money.
Right.
So everything that is contractual passed by the voters is in this, included in this budget.
Correct.
So, okay, I mean, I think this is a much better number. Yeah.
A point nine five percent?
Yeah.
My first experience, but I think it seems reasonable and includes the necessities, right?
Yeah.
Where were we last year, three?
We were.
Four?
We're four point nine nine.
Now we're point nine five? It's a win, man, I'll take the W.
We were close to like eight percent, though, with the teachers' contracts, so.
Right, that was without the teacher's contract, yep.
Yeah.
So then let me ask this question just because, again, the, the, the year-end fund balance, right? So if we're voting for a point nine five percent increase, we'll say there's thirty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of easy conversation. If that, say, the year-end fund balances, whatever it is, that goes back to the taxpayers, how?
So it's a calculation that the state does when they set the tax rate every year.
Okay, so it goes into the.
So it goes into the rate, oh, they had this much money left and then this whole computation of what the appropriation is gonna be for the next year, yeah.
So there could be a chance that this might not even be seen at all as an increase.
Right.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Do you guys have any more questions right now? No?
Is there any directives from the board or the superintendent's office around this budget or anything else you want us to look at? We did spend a lot of time really scrubbing it and looking at actuals and Brandon contacted teachers and reached out to see who would be tracking next year, like, um, yeah. But if there's any directives from us, from the board to us, we'll go back and do that. But we definitely put our best foot forward for our first draft for you all.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're gonna have another month to mull this over.
Yep.
So I think that, you know, mull this over, now that you've presented it to us, we might have more questions after we look at it again, based on what you're telling us today. And address that if we need to at that time.
Yep, and then I just asked if the board has questions or wants more information to email Tiffany and she'll send, um, those questions to us and we'll bring that information to the next board meeting for you all.
Uh, any public comment?
No.
Input, questions, we're good? Okay, so we'll close, um, public comment now. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are going to move on to the approval of minutes for October eighth, the eighth, public and non-public. Uh, do you guys have any changes for those minutes?
No.
Oh, man.
Okay, I don't either. I'll make a motion to approve the October eighth, public and non-public minutes.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All right. So we are gonna move on to the chair's report, uh, board committee assignment, superintendent evaluation, Kirsten.
Um, while everyone received the notice, um, superintendent Aswell has given her, um, retirement letter and will be retiring. And, um, at the joint board meeting, it was unanimous decision to appoint, uh, Dr. Andruski as the next superintendent. That contract is, uh, with the superintendent evaluation committee is under review right now. Um, I know that, um, the joint board, uh, chairs have met with Dr. Andruski to set up that contract. And so we will be meeting, I think, in the next month, um, to review as a committee. Uh, and that transition will happen between June thirtieth and July first. I think that's the biggest news.
Um, safety and security, it was my first meeting, um, last month, um, the meeting went well, um, happy to take part in that. I know that there were several things that were discussed, I think nothing sort of major to report coming out of that session. And we have, um, the latest sessions coming up on the calendar, um, with the next being.
February.
February. Hold on to the wrong email here. Give us one second.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Okay.
February.
I gotta go back to all Sharon's emails. Excuse me, I cannot find it at the moment.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Is that one of the, February thirteenth?
Yep.
So, ways off from that, um, I know that there are some tabletop exercises that were discussed, uh, that we're doing. Um, did also discuss some, um, active shooter scenarios and things, so, um, yeah. Anything else, Renee, that I'm missing from that?
No, I, the safety security meeting is always really hard to talk about because it's mostly confidential. It's really good to get everyone in the same room, you have your school administrators, you have your first responders, um, your facilities, like everyone, and we just problem solve, share communication. Go over what training staffs had and done, if there's any changes or grants for hardening the infrastructure, we talk about that. Um, yeah, and that's really, I mean, we, it is nice to note in public that SU sixteen contender, continues to be a leader in the state around the safety and security. Planning and measures and that other districts do reach out to us and ask us for support in our plans or sort of what we're doing and how we're doing it, so. Everyone, every building's on track, including this building's done all their drills in a timely manner, staff's been amazing here, so it's been, Brandon's done a nice job, it's run smoothly.
Um, I can move on to, uh, strategic planning.
Yeah, go ahead.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, for strategic planning, uh, we met, uh, about two weeks ago and, um, again, that was my first meeting as part of that committee. Um, during that session, we reviewed, um, the draft of the survey that's gonna be going out to, um, staff, faculty, uh, sorry, staff, faculty, students, parents and community members, um, early in the year. Um, and then we are going to be reviewing those results, uh, in a session, uh, in March. Um, which we'll then be sharing that, the results out, making that, those findings public, so. Um, that's, was pretty much focused on that conversation, we're providing feedback on the survey for this week. Uh, there's gonna be a meeting, uh, on the twenty-first that I'm actually not gonna be able to make, I'm gonna be on vacation away, so. Uh, I did let, um, Dr. Aswell know that I wouldn't be to attendance and she was okay with that, so.
The twenty-first of?
November.
November?
And I can get you the time.
So Thursday?
Yes.
Do you wanna, do you know if you could go or you wanna go? To the, uh, twenty-first?
It's December one, hold on one second. It's five thirty to six thirty at the SAU sixteen offices.
On the twenty-first?
Yep, Thursday, November twenty-first, five thirty, six thirty.
I'm putting it in, that is by no means a commitment.
Five thirty to six thirty, okay.
At SAU?
Yeah.
And is that to go over the final draft?
Yeah, it's to review just the final draft and review all the feedback from everybody's input.
So you've already started the survey?
No, we haven't started the survey, it's to review the feedback from the planning committee on the draft before it actually gets finalized and gets prepped for, um, distribution.
Thanks. And then that draft, is that from an SAU sixteen perspective or is that individual, is it still sticking with SAU sixteen as a whole perspective? Like, will the survey be written? Because I know the last one we did was our, you know, your feedback on SAU sixteen as a whole, not each individual school, so I'm just assuming that it's probably.
Yeah, it's gonna be on, on as a whole.
Oh, so yes, nothing's changed there?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So I know they had discussed, you know, maybe breaking it down, but this is for strategic planning.
There's a couple open-ended questions that are in it, but I, I think people could provide feedback on a specific school within the district. Um, but the questions are general feedback about the school district as a whole, so.
Okay. Alrighty, um, Kirsten, do you want to finish up with your?
Yeah, wellness, um, no new news from the last update, we're, they're still creating a toolbox. Um, I think we're having a meeting in January, I just looked, I couldn't find anything in December. So, there's been no, no new updates from our last talk.
Alrighty, so we'll move on to policy. So we do have some policies tonight. I'll just go through our little cheat sheet here. Policy code AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity employment and anti-discrimination plan. It's a revision of, um, this policy has been updated to reflect changes to Title IX federal regulations. Policy ACA, discrimination harassment grievance procedure, this is a new policy. This new policy provides a uniform grievance procedure for discrimination harassment issues. Policy ACAC, Title IX prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment, policy and grievance procedure. This is a review, revision. This policy is intended to fully replace the previous ACAC and is intended to reflect the requirements of the twenty-twenty-four federal regulations pertaining to Title IX and of the Education Amendments Act of nineteen seventy-two. Policy ACE, procedural safeguards, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, this is a review, revision. So a small, uh, revision and we're just kind of adding references in there. Policy JLDBB, suicide prevention and response plan. So in July of twenty twenty-two, the Jason Dickey Suicide Prevention Act passed, which required the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline to be included on student ID cards. In twenty twenty-four, House Bill eleven oh nine updated that law by specifically changing the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline to the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. The law also now requires a National Alliance for Eating Disorders help line number to be placed on students' IDs. Policy code EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan, this is a new policy and this policy is needed to, um, satisfy state law. Policy EH, public ass, access to school district records, so this is a reviewer revision and the catalyst for this revision was. Catalyst for the revision to this policy is the passage of House Bill one zero zero two. This twenty twenty-four amendment allows districts to require an additional charge for copies of electronic, electronic communications that are large, uh, so over two hundred and fifty individual electronic communications. So on like a right-to-know request. And the policies to withdraw for tonight are KED, facilities or services grievance procedure, this policy is recommended to be withdrawn with the adoption of ACA. So a lot of these policies had to do with Title IX changes and I know they gave us a little, like, comparison for the differences in Title IX between twenty and twenty twenty-four. So I didn't know if you had any questions on any of the policies. Do you want to go over anything specific?
Can I just ask, um, I'm looking through my cheat sheet, can I just ask? This was brought up in joint board, um, also, but the right-to-know policy.
Yep.
Um, and then this new policy coming in with large volumes of electronics. Can you explain to me us, like, the right, you know, summarize the right-to-know, like, if, if Dr. Aswell gets a request, they can't take student, it's not student documents they can take, correct?
We, we have to pay to redact the name, it costs us a lot of money, but they can. So for an example, the SAU got a, a right-to-know request for any and all emails that include IEP and they listed just random words. So we had to go through all of our emails, do a search and then find those words and then we had to pay to redact any students' names, initials or identifying information. This does happen in public schools quite a bit and it can be very expensive for us to do the right-to-knows when they ask for words that are gonna, ask for emails that contain identifying information around students, we have to pay to get it redacted. Yes, they can, if it's in an email, they can request.
So who, who requests stuff like that?
Any citizen. We get requests, one request we believe was from someone in Arizona that costs us district money, not this district, dot, cost. That costs this district money, not this district, costs a district in the SEU money. So anyone can send a right-to-know to Dr. Aswell.
And she has to?
Respond.
Has to respond.
We don't create it. If we have it, we will ask for an extension or we say we can give you this information by a certain time. We'll ask for an extension. If it doesn't exist, we say, there is no such thing that exists. Like, we don't have, sometimes we get requests for very random things that we just don't keep records of and we don't have a record of that. So we don't create it, but if we have it, we'll do the search through our emails, pull them up, and we have to send it home.
And do you find that most of the time they're after information that is, like, to survey or do research or?
No.
No, okay.
So, and I know in that, the way the state law was passed in that policy EH, Public Access to School District Records, you can let them know ahead of time, like, how much, you can give them an estimate as to like what the charges would typically look like. So if anything over, what, two, I have it in my notes here. Two hundred and, over two hundred and fifty pages can be a dollar per page. So basically, you could say, okay, you know, that information that you requested is gonna be like two thousand dollars and you can ask for that payment before they get that information.
Okay.
That's the new law, which is helpful.
But they don't, they don't have to pay it.
Well, then they don't.
Well, there are certain.
Yeah.
So they, so they're in the policy, according to state law. I do think that there is a way, maybe provides a way for some waivers of digital communication charges. So, you know, that they would have to go through that process. But yes, we can charge because it does take our resources and our time.
Yeah, absolutely.
What budget does that come out of typically?
The local budget. So if someone said, we want all, we want all Brandon's emails for the following topics. It doesn't cost a lot to search it, a couple hours of tech. But then the printing off, the redacting and all this stuff, and it's like, it is all gonna come out of this local budget to do all that. It's gonna come out of this local budget.
Yeah, so now what, you know, how they'll be handling it is, you know, how many items, you know? And then there'll be a cost associated with that.
Right, and I think it was over two hundred pages, is it right?
Uh, two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty.
Or digital.
Have you ever been asked, Brandon?
They'll ask the superintendent. They all, all right-to-knows are directed to the superintendent. So Dr. Aswell gets some for any and all people.
Okay, thanks.
Or Heather Murray, the director of HR, may get them too, yeah.
Tiffany, I just had a question, just because I noticed that two of these just have very extensive red lines and a couple of them have really nothing.
Yes.
The ones that have extensive red lines, is that, it's not like a rewrite, it's just kind of just updating the language essentially to reflect?
Some of the ones related to Title IX are really completely redone.
Redone, okay.
That's why you see a lot of red lines.
Okay.
Like a new model policy mostly.
So it's just, it's kind of just a total?
Yeah, just following the letter of the law.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, I think that it's gonna change again, you know, within this year or even. So these are all policies, I'm assuming that we're gonna be.
I feel like we did this when I first joined, I feel like there was a couple of policies, yeah.
I think, yeah, I think this, we'll be seeing this again soon. But yeah, I think there's a lot of new legislature that really hit on, you know, these big changes. Especially though the data management policy as right-to-know requests become more popular. And then the, some of them, you know, we didn't, we didn't have at all new, completely new policies.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about those one that was withdrawn. The KED one, the Facilities and Services, or Services. Why would that have been withdrawn as a policy? Is there something else that replaced it or encompasses that? Is that why?
So ACA, so KED.
Yeah, ACA replaced it.
Okay.
Do not have that one? Oh, yeah, it's probably. I would imagine that's gonna be a fourth packet. KED. Procedure. Yeah, it was definitely a Title IX. Incorporated Title IX into the ACA.
ACA, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. Any other further questions? We're good? Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt policy AC, ACA, ACAC, ACE, JLDBB, EBCH, EH, as amended and to remove policy KED. Do you have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so goal number one, me. Great presentation again, Brandon. I think we're heading in the right direction. And I think it's a win all the way around for everyone involved. So that's all for my goal, uh, goal two. Kirsten?
So the, I guess it's a statement. I'm thrilled that the presentation was focused on the community park. Yep, it makes my heart really smile that the school is truly invested in building the space for themselves. That it's authentic for the kids, that they're part of it. Like, there's so much going on in that space. It really does, like, make my heart smile. It can be or will be really great once we get there and get the trees down. Yeah, so that was great. So December sixth, start advertising, get everybody out there. It's just a, it's a, it's a very holistic approach to what we're trying to do. It's fantastic.
I had one question about your goal. So when will the kiddos be making the items that they're gonna sell? Are they making some in class with like in art or?
They're, they're, they're doing it at home.
They're doing it at home?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, you know, the goal is to get as many community vendors in there.
Okay.
To work alongside the kids.
So they came up with those ideas on their own to make at home, like the bookmarks and different things?
Couple things are glued to my kitchen table at the moment.
That's cool. So I know they showed all their items, but I just wasn't sure, like, if they're, you know, how that was going.
Yeah, no, they're, they're creating on their own, yeah.
That's awesome.
Can we, if, like, was, like, the front page of the slideshow, like, print that out, bring it to the library? And talk to the director of the library too, to see if we can solicit some more community vendors?
Mr. Blonsky may have reached out to Zoe already.
Already?
I suggested, yeah, I felt Zoe out.
Okay.
Suggested to Mr. Blonsky last week to reach out to Zoe.
Okay, well, I'll follow up and if there's, if the kids and the one team, two team can make some flyers, I'll be happy to do that with. Walk around town with that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice. Anything else? Alright, goal number three, Paul?
Yeah, so for capital improvement, I think last time we met, we had motion for, pick up to sixty or sixty-five grand for funds out of the trust. Brandon, did you want to talk at all about the rooftop heating?
That's, the heat exchange in the multi-purpose room went kaput. We had three different vendors out here to take a look at replacing just the heat exchange itself or the whole unit. The heat exchange itself was sixteen thousand five hundred, right?
Yep.
Yeah. That was the cheapest, a company that gave us just a price on the heat exchange. It's a company we've used several times. We trust them, the SEU works with them in many or most of our schools. To, to provide a whole new system on top of the roof would be fifty-four thousand dollars. So we chose the lesser. So there's, there hasn't been heat there in a couple weeks. And we would just need for approval to use up to, right, am I saying this right?
Up to.
So we have two options. We can just pay part out of the local budget. And it, we take the sixteen five out of the local budget and hope there's no other big expenses. Or you can give us permission now to take more money out of the sergeant or the capital improvement and pay for it that way. It's really either or. We've already started the work, but the company we went with doesn't require a down payment because they do so much work in SEU sixteen. We're good for it?
The work hasn't started yet.
Oh, I mean, we started the work of getting the, the.
Quotes and, yeah.
Yeah, we started the work.
We have, we're ready to roll as soon as.
We've done all the footwork. We got three bids, all of that stuff. And we, they don't require a down payment, but the board needs to decide if you want us to use local funds and roll with it or you wanna take money out of the trust fund. You'd need to tell us before we actually start the work.
Where do we stand with, sorry, Kirsten, where do we stand with the other things that we had sort of discussed or kind of potentially allocated the sergeant trust funds for when we last met? I know some of that stuff is falling under kind of the homeland security audit and stuff, but I think some of the funds were being put aside for some of the, for the units that were going in.
Is that something we need to talk about in non-public because it involves safety and security?
Well, there's still, the same estimates that we talked about for the same projects is still the same. So we don't, we haven't, we haven't started any of that.
We haven't done anything. We did, we did have the one company back in here to take a look at the electrical grid to see how that'll, that would work with potentially some of the changes we're gonna make. Something we need to talk about.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's too tricky to talk about it just because, you know, things might come up that are non-public. So I think that we can.
I have a question about the heating system.
Yeah.
So when they went up to look at the heating system for you to decide which you wanted to do?
Yeah.
They had to look at the whole thing?
Yeah.
Was the rest of it in reasonable condition so that that's why you went with this?
Yes.
I mean, I don't wanna do the sixteen five and then in two years have to do the sixty.
That was the exact question, Brandon.
I'm not, I'm not doing that.
That's what we talked about.
Okay.
You know, that the, all three companies said just for paying the heat.
Yep. We were, we were good. Okay.
Replacing the coil on an HVAC unit essentially.
Right. I just, I don't want us to be stuck in two years in the same situation. Because it is, you know, an older system and that, that needs to be replaced anyway.
Yeah.
But you feel pretty confident that this, this assessment was truly just this base.
Yeah, and we had a SEU sixteen HVAC guy come and look and look at the estimates too. So we were pretty certain that it, we could just replace this unit and not, hopefully, not come back in a year and say we need to replace the whole thing. So we did look into that.
Okay. Any more questions on the project itself?
Do you know what you guys wanna do?
Um, so I think we need to move into non-public to be able to ask the questions about the non-public items that we need funding for. Just to be able, it will come out of non-public and make a decision about this heating.
Okay.
Based on that discussion. So we have any new business or old business that you'd like to discuss before we go into non-public?
So I just wanted to let the board know, we will need to go into non-public under C for discussion that might adversely affect a public's reputation. And then I know that we wanna go over into non-public under I as well, but we're requesting to go under C.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one, A three, C and I. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Tiffany?
Kirsten?
Paul.
So the time is now six forty. We are out of non-public and I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, guys.